Mr. Eider?
Here.
Ms. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Kessler?
Here.
And Ms. Dyson?
Here.
All right. You just push it while you're talking?
A formal motion to elect tonight's president, I guess?
Yep.
Chairman, yep.
Brian Kessler as the chairman for tonight's zoning hearing.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Just don't write us.
Starting off strong.
Ms. Dyson?
Here.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Eider?
Yes.
And can I get a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
I motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
Ms. Dyson?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Eider?
Yes.
On the final matter, before we get into the public hearings, can I get a motion with respect to approval of the meeting minutes from our July 20, 2022 meeting?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from July 20, 2022.
I'm happy to second that.
Yeah. I was gonna say you weren't here, so I thought you were gonna have to be...
I second?
Yeah.
Mr. Eider?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Abstain.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
And Ms. Dyson?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone. We have two items, two matters with respect to tonight's meeting. The first one is a continuation of a matter that's been ongoing, and then we have a new matter. For those who haven't been at a meeting before, we'll have the staff member or someone from the Hamilton County get up and provide a staff report. We'll then have the applicant provide some information, and at that point in time we will have members from the public, those in favor first, those opposed next. At that point, we will conclude the public portion and then discuss it among ourselves and proceed whether to approve or deny the motion as is. I would ask anyone that comes up to the podium tonight to identify themselves, provide us with their name, as well as an address before providing any input in that regard. As such, let's get started. First up is Sims Township number 95-1 regarding the Waterstone Car Wash. This is a continuation from where we were previously, and I understand we have revised plans for tonight.
Yes, good evening. Brian Snyder, Hamilton County Planning and Development. You should have a copy of the addendum, addendum number two for this case. We have previously provided a staff report based on the original seminal, which was revised. There was a second addendum that was prepared, or sorry, addendum to the original staff report that was prepared. At the last meeting where this was considered, the commission indicated to the applicant that the commission was not interested in approving anything that required variances. We continue the case with the opportunity for the applicant to prepare a plan that didn't require any variances. The applicant did request another continuance and then has submitted revised plans for this meeting, and so we did prepare another addendum because the plans have been revised. The plans were revised specifically to move the dumpster and the kiosk to structures that didn't meet the setbacks previously. They've been moved to a point that does meet all of the required setbacks. Site access and circulation was changed significantly, although the driveway location would be in the same on the private drive coming to the north behind the existing vacant restaurant building to the top of this plan that's on the screen. That location is the same, but the circulation has essentially been reversed, so you would now come in and go along the western property line all the way down to the bottom where the kiosk would be located, and then you would proceed through the kiosk and up Car Wash Building from the south to the north instead of the other way around. The stacking spaces were increased as a result of that, and there's also been a pass-by lane provided on the outside of the building, so if you didn't want to go through the building after you got up to the kiosk, you go past the building without going through the middle of it, without going through the Car Wash. Monument sign has not changed. It's proposed to be the same. As stated before, it does comply with the zoning resolution, just not the specific color of the overall plan, sign plan for this area. Nothing has changed with that respect. And then landscaping and lighting were modified to reflect the changed arrangement, but would still comply with the requirements in zoning resolution. What has changed with respect to the vacuum area is the first thing we'll talk about. The vacuum area was previously covered. The whole thing was covered by a canopy where you would pull into both sides of the vacuum area and the entire thing was covered. They're proposing now to cover only the east side of the vacuum area and on the west side instead of the cover. They would have boom structures that would have the vacuum hoses on the end of them that would rotate around to whichever car was being used for. That, those structures are considered accessory structures. They would not meet the side yard setback from the western property line, so there's still be a variation in the side yard setback that would be needed for this plan. The site access and circulation, this plan's staff plan could be much better. It was more stacking than was previously approved even though it was in the zoning resolution before. There was some discussion about whether those spaces were in Deerfield Township or whether they were in Sims Township, whether they counted or not. All stacking spaces would be in Sims Township at this point. The only concern that staff brought in the original staff report that remains a concern is that there is currently an access easement between the property to the west and this property that would be closed off as part of this plan. In the staff report, staff notes that we don't enforce easement languages between private property owners, but did want to point out that that could be an issue with the adjacent property owner, and that's still the case because that driveway would still be closed off. As I stated earlier, the signage still doesn't meet the color requirements. Their background for the proposed pre-stated signage, blue is required to be this very specific color of green as per the approved sign plan. As we stated previously, the zoning commission does have the authority to change that sign plan because the zoning commission is the one that approved it originally, but staff pointed out that you might want to maintain consistency with all the other applicants that have been required to provide green signs of that specific green color. Other than that, that is all I have, and I have to answer any questions.
Brian, the vacuum cleaners, you say, are defined as an accessory structure?
Yes.
How, just help me understand why. I'm not questioning, I'm just trying to understand.
Well, they are, it's a structure. It's a pole that comes up out of the ground that is intended to be used for, as part of the business for vacuum hoses.
Is a light pole considered a structure?
It is considered a type of accessory structure. It's required, there are requirements for the height and location and spread of light poles as well.
Okay.
Usually light poles are exempt from setbacks.
Can you refresh my recollection since our last meeting, the cross easement issue with respect to the road?
I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of discussion about that again tonight. There's currently a driveway that exists between the fronts of all the buildings along the Eternal Road, and usually those don't exist without some type of easement, but as I stated, easements aren't part of zoning review. We don't administer them, we don't review them, approve them, or enforce them. It was put out merely as informational because if there's some claim of the property to the west that they have access through this property, this plan would not honor that agreement.
So since that's not within our purview, whose purview is that within?
It would be between the property owners to settle it privately.
Private, okay. Thank you.
The zoning commission, I will say, the reason that it was in the staff report, the zoning commission does have the authority to regulate access between adjacent properties when it's located within a PUD. So you do have the authority to say whether or how that driveway can be closed off. You can require it to remain open or approve it being closed off. No matter what you do, doesn't, it wouldn't change the outcome of easement between the two private property owners, but as the zoning commission, because this is part of an overall plan given development, you do have the authority to review the access.
Brian, do we have the authority to basically state that they would have to have mutual agreement on the access, you know, kind of on a revised access management plan before, you know, we could approve it? Like, could we require that as a condition?
You would not be able to require it as a condition. You could continue the hearing until that outcome was...
Until they provide evidence?
But that may, like I said, it may require legal action between the two property owners to solve whether the easement is, whether it says one thing or another, and I'm sure they both disagree with what it says currently, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here on behalf of the applicant? Good evening. If you could provide us with your name and address, please.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening. Sophia Holly, on behalf of the applicant. My address is 1 East Fourth Street, Cincinnati, Ohio 45202. It's good to see everyone again. I believe this is our fourth time here. Last time, I was with family at COVID, so we've got my mentor and supervisor, Tom Tecky, and I know that we've discussed a lot of these issues before, but I just wanted to sort of touch upon some of the ones that have just been raised up recently. So first things first, private easement agreement, that is something that's to be resolved if there is any dispute in a civil lawsuit. It's not something within the purview of zoning. To the extent that there's issues with or claims of violation of the easement agreement, well, I would love to be dragged into Hamilton County Court of Common Pleas to discuss that, but that's not something that impacts the decision here today. Furthermore, I'd like to sort of highlight some of the positives here. Ms. Bennington, who's joining me for today, put together a break, our updated site plan. As Mr. Snyder indicated, circulation has been improved, stacking, which was previously compliant, has been increased, and there's now a passing line, a passing lane. The stacking and the circulation was previously acceptable, but now we've made it even better, so I think that's great. With the way that the lighting was previously made, that's been modified to meet zoning resolution regulations. On the sign, so this is a unique parcel in the sense that it's adjacent to a separate county. I will say, as you know, there is a blue sign for US Bank. That's not this property, and that's not this county, but however, it sort of shows that it might be appropriate to consider permitting the trade dress, my client, to be continued on through a sign, through a blue sign. If that's going to be a reason to deny the application here, we certainly don't want that, and we would be completely open to a requirement that the sign meet the trade dress, the funky purple and green scheming that I recall from my youth and that is also part of this, part of the sign. We would be okay to change that. I would submit that it could be appropriate to approve it because the US Bank sign's blue too. And then the final point I'd like to address is the setback requirement. I just want to highlight, I know this has been said before, the adjacent pet land's property has almost no setback from the property line, so to approve a boomback, which is arguably not accessory structure, because arguably it's kind of like a light pole, which is not typically held to the setback requirement, to require that to be removed or to deny the request based upon that, I think is maybe not necessarily necessary, given that the setbacks are already not necessarily being followed for adjacent properties. But with that said, I mean, we really want to get this property in. We want to get this development going, and if it would be the difference between an approval or denial, we would be acceptable to removing those boombacks from the area in which there's a setback, which Mr. Snyder's intended is a setback violation, and it would be appropriate for you to make that a condition of approval here. With that said, I can't see, I can't think of any reason why we can't get approval here today based upon Sims Township zoning resolution. We've worked really hard and put a lot of work into it. Let me clarify that. Ms. Bennington has worked really hard as an engineer to put together a site plan that meets the code. Just to get it out here, this area is specifically approved for a car wash use. That's something that's already been decided, so this is appropriate for a car wash. We've given you a site plan that's appropriate with the zoning resolution. It took us a while to get here, and thank you for your patience, but I hope that, I hope that you'd agree with me that this is appropriate approval here today. If there's any later dispute with respect to the private easement, that's something that can be resolved in the Hamilton Court of Common Pleas, and if you have any questions for me, please let me know, but I would like to turn it over to Ms. Bennington, who's much more knowledgeable than I am, for any questions you have, my half of her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. As she mentioned, my name's Hayley Bennington. I'm a civil engineer with Fuller. We are the civil consultants here on behalf of Tiger Wave. My address is 1 Allegheny Square, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, 15212. Really, the site has been discussed at length here. I won't get into too much more detail, but I really do want to reiterate that Tiger Wave is really trying here. They're really trying to make this a site that works for everybody. I will say, as someone who's doing many and many of these sites, that Tiger Wave is breaking a lot of their own rules with this site to try and make it work for the township. So they really do want to, they want this to work for everybody. As far as the access is concerned, like Sophia said, that's really a private matter. We're not really sure which way the neighboring property owner would want it to go. If they want the access or not, it's kind of hard to say, because I know that would also increase traffic potentially across our property. So the safer bet for us at this time was to just show it as closed off. We did increase the amount of stacking by flipping the Car Wash, so the exit is now on the north side of the site. As Brian mentioned, we have the bypass lane on the side and the switch. We've reduced the number of vacuums to kind of squeeze the site to be a little bit tighter. We got rid of one of the canopies, and we also actually shrunk the size of the building a little bit too, again, to try and bring everything tighter to the middle of the site. As far as the variance related to the boombacks on the west side of the site, really, our intent there was, that's an existing nonconformity. That's where the current restaurant is today. It's a place kind of on that side of the site within that setback. So our thought was, you know, the boombacks are less offensive of the structure. There's no walls, there's no roof, and so that was kind of our intent there. As Sophia said, we'd really like to get approval, so worst case, if we have to eliminate those boombacks, then so be it, but as far as operationally and best business practice for Tiger Wave, they'd really like to have that number of vacuums that we have shown there. The other thing with the signage, and as she said, we're certainly not going to let color be the holdup. Blue would be, Tiger Wave, blue would be their preference, but that's not, that's not a make or break for them, so. I'm happy to answer. Any other questions related to the site, or Sophia, if you have any questions?
Can I ask you a question? You've brought up an interesting point, that the current building that's there today, how does that, if you would superimpose that over your site plan, where would that approximately be, was it the western facade?
It's, oh gosh, I wish I had the number of feet it is. It's pretty close to that property line. It basically mirrors the pet land, so.
But would it be like in the stacking lane? Would it be where the vacuum cleaners are?
I mean, I think it would go to the, I have a guess, the boomback stalls, if I had to guess. Probably the first sheet.
The current restaurant sticks out past the pet land. You can see it on the vicinity map. That's in the back of the addendum, which has the aerial photo.
Yeah, so if you took this building right here and you put it on top of this right here, what would this building cover on this? Does that make sense?
Yes, no, that makes sense. I wish I'd exhibit. I would have to do that in CAD easily. I'm sorry, could I probably just flip back to the site plan, our proposed site plan? Just based on my estimate here, I would say it goes into that drive. The existing building would go, probably almost to the canopy.
So the existing building would be in the drive aisle of the stacking, is what you're saying?
No, even further. It would be...
On the other side of the, past the curb of that? Is there a curb there?
Yeah, it would be past the curb. It would be past the boombacks.
Slightly. It's, you can see the building on the graphic, so the adjacent, the adjacent building is on there. The outline of the pet land is on there, and it, like she said, it's about the same setback between the two, between the current building and the property line.
So it's gonna be where that car is roughly, if you just...
Further than that, probably halfway through that car, that line of cars.
What's the difference in impervious surface from kind of what's existing and what's proposed?
I'm not sure. And then we track back when the original restaurant was approved. It wasn't a standard at the time.
What's the requirement now?
There is not one. There still isn't a requirement in Sims Township.
I believe it's the same were reduction. Okay, so you're not, because there are, you know, like the driveways, and I was trying to kind of figure out also if it's kind of cutting into the, you know, this effect on the other side too. Okay. Because our straw mortar couch, like, there's no requirement for us to do any detention because we have an increased impervious, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
I do want to applaud your engineering efforts based on where we started and where we're at now. I mean, you certainly incorporated our concerns, and I'm appreciative of that. A question I have, and I don't know if it's more appropriate for you or council, as to whether or not this revised plan has been discussed either with the Waterstone Association or the neighboring properties. I mean, they'll certainly have an opportunity to discuss it, but I was just curious, has this been discussed with anyone?
I don't believe so, but based upon this, it looks to me like we're assuming something that is approvable just under the code, under the zoning ordinance, and so anyone should be able to build this. We don't, I shouldn't have permission for my neighbors to do something unpermitted to do under the law, under the zoning provisions. That's my position on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in favor of the proposed development? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the proposed development?
Yes.
Please come up and identify yourself, please.
Good evening. Brad Gibson, 1077 Celestial Streets, Suite 10, Cincinnati, Ohio. I want to make a couple of points. The first one, it seems to me that it keeps getting overlooked. The council just said the plan should be approved as is. It complies with all the zoning regulations, but we still, we brought this up last time. It doesn't comply. This is a full-service car wash. When you look at the definitions in the zoning code...
I apologize for interrupting, but I think last time we discussed whether it was full or self, and I think the determination was it was a self-service.
Well, I think it's maybe what they hit another look. The definition of a self-service car wash, four stacking spaces for each stall plus two drying spaces for each stall. What that definition does not include is the building, the tunnel.
Can we clarify something real quick? That's not the definition. That's a parking requirement from the parking chapter, correct?
This is, it is not a definition. You are correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you aware of the definition?
No, it's not defined in the zoning code, so it's defined like it would normally be in a regular dictionary.
Okay. This, with respect to parking for self-service car washes, my point being, it talks about four stacking spaces for a stall plus two drying spaces for a stall. What do you not have at self-service car washes, the tunnel, employees? What does it talk about in the full service requirement? Four parking spaces per stall, one for each employee. We've already said they're gonna have, I believe last time they said they'd have three employees there, plus reservoir space. Four vehicles waiting to be washed. That's what a reservoir space is. What is, what are they showing on the plan? Vehicles waiting to be washed. Three spaces for each 10 feet of building. Tunnel here is 131.1, we went somewhere, 134 and a half feet. That's 40 reservoir spaces. The plan has nowhere near that. Nowhere near that. And if we recall, last time, Mr. Atkins, who's here again, and I don't know how much of it he's gonna show you, but he went through a very long presentation talking about other title, Tiger Wave car washes, showed pictures, how many spaces there are. The reason there's this requirement is because there'll be cars backed up into the street. So the plans don't meet. So this body is gonna have to decide, oh, no, this is self-service, therefore, we're only looking at four stacking spaces, regardless of the fact that when you look at, you get a number 20 for full service, that's what we talked about, the requirements relating to a building, the tunnel, reservoir spaces, which is exactly what they're showing. They're two, they're not one lane that, once you get through five spots of waiting, you can then go with pass-by. It's just, it's, this is the requirement we should be dealing with, and they're nowhere near it. Nowhere near it at all. You know, the second thing I really want to raise, and again, just going back to the last meeting, you heard from Mr. Atkins, you heard from Waterstone Association, the concern with your residents who have tens of millions of dollars invested into this area. If this body is going to grant or accept this plan, it has to do so under EE Section 137. It says, "It's the purpose of the district to provide sites for retail business uses at appropriate locations for service in an appropriate relation to their surrounding to afford an attractive setting in harmony with the environment." When you go down 137.2, it says, "The zoning commission may modify requirements to the extent warranted, providing the surrounding property and the public welfare in our attic will be protected." That's, that's what govern- That's, that's what governs your decision here, and we're asking, they're asking for variances, still, despite the board's direction from two months ago when we were here. I dug around some case law, I tried to find some other car wash cases. There was one city of Cincinnati, 2006, for the attorneys in the room, that's 2006, Ohio 1847, Paddock Point, the Board of Zoning Appeals of Cincinnati, had to do with a car wash, they wanted to put it in Avondale. The zoning board shot it down, got appeal, court of appeals said the decision was right. And why was that? Well, they looked at what was governing the decision. Now that, the regulation said, development will be approved if it's in the public interest. And they have factors, this is city of Cincinnati, so it's not directly in point, but the factors were, what are the zoning regs, the urban development plans, the neighboring uses, and the public peace, health, safety, and welfare. Same idea, that's in the Simms Township. In that case, they said there was evidence that the car wash, car wash would detract from the neighborhood's general aesthetics, it would increase crime, noise, traffic. We've heard, again, and I don't know how much this commission needs to hear again, but traffic in the area is already a nightmare. Refer back to this idea of a full-service car wash needing 40 reservoir spaces. There's a reason that this is going to spill out into the drive, this is going to create major issues for the neighbors, again, that have tens of millions of dollars invested into these properties. And I understand council is inviting them also. That will happen, that's, that's what's going to happen. So, to the extent, Mr. Snyder said, the board has authority to request that there be some correspondence between the interested parties that have to do with that easement. I also say, at minimum, you should recommend that, because this, this issue wasn't going away. So just to, I think Mr. Atkins is going to speak again, I'll let him go, but I, I do want to reiterate, I don't think we can just accept that this is a perfectly viable plan. It's, to Mr. Snyder's point, it's not defined, what's full and self, but I think, again, I brought this up last time. The self-service part are the vacuum booths, the stalls. The full-service part, the employees, the building. I think the board should deny on that basis, because the plans do not accommodate enough parking spots. The board is not inclined to do that, I think they should incline on the basis that this board has, and I would say it's not within the general welfare of Simms Township and the neighboring property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to present yourself?
Please.
I was asking if you would like to come up and present.
My question is, do you want to go through my presentation from last time?
Is there anyone here that has not seen it, that would benefit from it?
I saw it the first time.
The second go-round was a lot more detailed.
It was more detailed.
My question is...
Do you want to give me the highlights?
...
It provides comparisons from other locales.
I think the main thing that I would be interested in is if the association has been, because you represent the association, right?
I represent that one, I'm a property owner.
Property, okay.
I can review, I can talk about Waterston, I'm in with the association, I can speak to, to what we think the impact is, and really, it's got nothing to do with Simms Township. And I'd like to talk about that. So if, if they can hook up my computer, I'm willing to go through the presentation, I can, I can do whatever I want. But here's the issue before I get into it. They talk about the provisions of setbacks, they talk about provisions of queuing within the property, they talk about the vacuum cleaner, they talk about the sidewalk, what that's... Our, our testing this has nothing to do with any of those things. It has to do with being disingenuous about what impact they will have to the fact. The property, the business is not here, they're represented by council, that's still been here. I've done this around the country. If I own a property, I'm presenting, I present. I don't, I use consultants, but if it's something so important, it'll impact other people, I talk to the other people. They can do whatever they want, they obviously are not concerned about the next property. We've been there since the beginning. What they're going to do, this impacts, this not only impacts us, this is a highly congested corridor. Even in the summer, it's difficult to make a left turn going, it's difficult to go the other way. There is no way into the property, because there's a median when you go up to the road that is continuous. On Waterston Boulevard, you can take a right-hand turn early, so there's really only one way to get in. You can take a, you can circle around the property, take a left at the traffic light, and then turn into the property left and back at the traffic. It's not meant for that. Or you can take a right from Fields Road, and then another right. But when you get to the property, they can queue, their new plan has, I think, 12 cars, that's all you can get. The market clearly states that's not the case, it's not the case in Simms Township, it's not the case. I took the time and the effort, I can guarantee you dates, that they've done other places, but within Simms Township, the fact is, we have three car washes within blocks of this. We have Mike's, we have Zip's, and we have Car Wash Plus. The three of those all have queuing of 24, 26, and 28 spaces. Zip's car wash, I'm looking at existing facilities in Oregon County. The minimum they have is 20. I look at random facilities, all agreed to are 20 to 28 queuing. Here, they say 20, that 12 is sufficient. The reason it's sufficient is they, they are going to use the private drive. Now, I've heard it's not under your jurisdiction.
Zip's or Titleway?
Titleway.
Okay, you said Zip's.
But...
Zip's is in our jurisdiction, right?
Zip's are within Simms Township, there's three other...
No, you said Zip's in Kentucky.
And Mike's is not.
Okay, there are three car, let me pause, three car washes within Simms Township. Mike's Car Wash, Zip's, and Car Wash Plus. In Oregon County, there's, there's one that is opening, two, another that isn't in place, and then there's two in Missouri that we looked at, that have recently...
Titleway.
Titleway.
Okay, that's...
And those four Titleways, the minimum that they add... The minimum is Alexandria, Kentucky, they have 20. The other are 25, 25, and 25. So it's, it's difficult for me to believe here that they're presenting it. There's no problem. The reason they're not talking to anybody is because they don't want to face the facts that they're going to use our driveway to do it. And what happens is this, that driveway basically is a dry path, it's an easy path to connect two streets together and allow access, driveway access into your property so you're self-contained, your parking, your access, but you can't block other people's access. They will block ours, our access, because people have to come right in front, so our main parking lot, the Petland, will be blocked. They'll block the access to the AT&amp;T building and vitamins shop, block. They'll also block the accessible parking in front of Petland. We have it right in front of the building, that's where it's supposed to be, it will be blocked. Difficult thing about people who have a handicap, which includes my son, when you go, if you're, you've got a son, you've got a handicap and you're coming, you can't get out of the car and knock on somebody's door and say hey, can you move? And if you're plugged there, and you're blocked, and you can't pull out, you won't be able to pull out. That's a fact. They haven't talked to Waterston, they haven't talked to the fire department, they haven't talked to anybody, because they don't care. This is a zoning case, and that's all it is to them. But us, it's going to destroy the three other property owners. And it's not, it's not temporary, it's permanent. So the association has records, they can, they can sue, Costco can sue. And what happens is when they, when they block traffic left coming in, and a right-hand turn, they block off, that is a very sensitive word. When you come in, if traffic isn't moving at that point, you screw up all Fields Road. And guess whose jurisdiction Fields Road is? Simms Township and Simms Township Police Department. When you talk about accidents, when you talk about blocking, when you talk about people being disrupted, we will call police. One of the best users, example, around the country, there's two users, there's Chick-fil-A and there's Starbucks, big drive-through user. I owned a Starbucks in Florence, which was the number one Starbucks in Ohio, Kentucky, and Vienna. And here's what happened. We had a wonderful drive-through, but the drive-through went to connector Drive, and it went out to Mall Road. And you went Diane Whelan, Mary, Mary, she sent me a photograph, she sent me a photograph, said Jerry, I can't do anything on your property, but I'm going to get $100 citations to every person that blocks my street. And you know what we had to do? We had to spend $200,000 to fix our problem. So we did a drive-around property, and they, they now have 27 queue spaces at Starbucks for a drive-through for a 2,000 square foot store. When they do a Chick-fil-A, Chick-fil-A had an enormous problem nationally, they solved it. They have triple circulation on their property. You go, you go up to Mason Montgomery and see what they did, because that is responsible. We have somebody who's being very irresponsible, they don't want to talk to anybody, they, they act as if it's a self-contained property, they will cause enormous issues, not for just the three property owners, but they're going to cause something that's very sensitive on access off of Fields Road. This will cost Simms Township. They will have, they will have to police this, they will have to take care of it. We will sue, we will litigate this matter, because if they're, they're blocking us, we're going to protect our property rights. We will cut them out, we will tell people they can't park there, we will protect our property rights. And if people can't get to Costco, and Target, and the Waterston, and the 2 hotels, and the three all these companies representing over $100 million investment in this area, they're going to sue. And we've got support on this. So it's just not a car wash, it's just not, it's not zoning, it's just, they, they're not being right neighbors, they're being very disingenuous on what they're doing. Their own properties don't perform this way. It doesn't perform that way in Simms Township. We already have three car washes, we know what happened. And there's a requirement that you have to be, you have to do something to the public that, this isn't going to work, it absolutely is going to be catastrophic, we will be back in here again. This is your responsibility to keep bad things from happening, and this is going to be a bad thing. I don't like them to use, I've been to four of these already. I collected real data, I collected real data from the user. They don't operate their car washes this way. They, they can't legitimately say, I'd like to see somebody from Titleway come here, because in local business, Mike's Car Wash says it won't work that way. Nobody says it won't work this way, and it isn't going to work this way. And the impact on us would be immediate, because once they're past 12 cars, they can't say guarantee it'll always be 12 cars, and we're going to get everybody flowing through and everything to a degree, because our parking, it's a right-hand turn in, they're not going to be left-hand turn into their space, they're right-hand turn, they're going to block all of, they're going to block like seven parking spaces right in front of our stores. The most important thing is they're going to block our accessible parking. They don't have a way to solve that problem for us. It's been there, they've seen it, they know it's there, they've ignored it. I can't ignore it. It's going to impact our ability to operate. So people will quit coming to Petland, people will quit coming to AT&amp;T, people will quit coming to Vitamin Shoppe. This is a use, I love car washes, love to go to them, love to get my car washed, I go once a week, but this is not the proper place for it, because they can't accommodate their use on their site, it's clear on that. You know, they presented a nice case for what they have, but they are going to impact Simms Township, they're going to impact Warren County as well, it's going to impact every user. This is a big shopping center, it's very sensitive to access, it's the most important thing, and this could have a very negative impact. You guys, hurry here, common sense tells you, when I go to Mike's Car Wash, when I go to Zip's, when I go to the Car Wash on Montgomery, those don't just queue nine or 12 cars, they extend beyond that. That's why they have four drives up in Mike's Car Wash, that's why they have three in Car Wash, that's why they have a self-contained site at Zip's, of which you guys approved, because they're self-contained on their property. They took a property that's not appropriate for their use, they're trying to shoehorn it in, they're trying to jam this down our throats as if nothing's happened. I'm very appreciative of their sign up. I wouldn't have known about it otherwise. Once I saw it, and I said, wow, what a car wash. And I did my work, and I did my research, and it's not appropriate for this site, but I can tell you, it will destroy, maybe that's not their concern, they're not going to talk to us, they're not going to talk to the association, but we're deeply concerned about it. And you know, maybe, maybe with their public funding of their company based in San Francisco or where they're based, they don't have to care, but they're not a local property owner, they, they're not invested in the community. I've owned that property since 2006, and I developed it, it's a family investment, it means a lot to me. It means a lot to me, a car wash will be gone in 10 years, they could destroy the businesses that are there today. So that is my case. I've, I've presented all these comps, I went out in Marketplace, I spent the time looking for them, I know that's the way they operate, there's not anything they can say otherwise. They want you to approve the plan and forget about everything that happens outside of the property, but they can't. Starbucks, when they go into Beachmont Avenue, Anderson Township went after them, City of Florence went after me, people went after Chick-fil-A all around the country, and people solve their problems. They're creating a problem for you that you are, in the end, going to have to solve. So we have an opportunity to make them solve the problem. The reason they're not talking to us is because they don't have a solution, and they don't have facts to back up their case. They're going to tell me, oh yeah, we're not going to need more 12 cars. They're going to block my, my parking spots, they're going to block my access, and they're going to destroy the value of my property. So they don't have any other argument other than that. There are some cases, yes, we've performed everything. It's not about any of that stuff, it's what happens outside of their property, and that is critically important. It is a private property case, if we have to sue them and waste our time and effort and money to do it, so be it, we'll do it. They should put the property back on the market and let it use that's appropriate for Simms Township operating here. Question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a copy of this presentation?
Yeah, she just gave it to me, I've been looking at it.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question for Brian, real quick. Has the county determined if this is a self-service or a full-service car wash?
Yes.
And what was that determination?
Self-service. You stay in your car, you don't get out of your car, nobody cleans the inside of your car for you, nobody drives it through the car wash, you don't need any place to go, you literally come onto the property, and the only thing you do yourself is the vacuum. I'm sorry, you drive yourself through the, through the building? You don't get out of your car, and you, you do all of that yourself.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Go ahead.
I've, I've been to their car wash over in Alexandria, here's how their, self-serve car wash will be is, I drive in, nobody else, I go, I spray it, I have to go through, I can even go through a self-serve that there's nobody there. But their car wash, if somebody has a human for the cash, they have two people who've spotted off your car before you go to the car wash, on your way out, they have somebody there to help you with the vacuum, to give you towels to wipe off your car. It is not in the definition, I think the definitions of self-serve are very inadequate within the code, but it's not self-serve. They have five, six, seven, they, they have employees that work there, but they, they help you, they help clean your car. The only thing that's self-serve is there's an automatic car wash there, but they have lots of people there helping you, and it, it is as close to a full service, but it's not a limited self-serve facility.
Sounds like more of a hybrid.
It is, and that's what most of these are today, and the code doesn't address that.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak or against? Please come up. Identify who you are, and please state your address.
Yeah, my name is Kathleen McMahon, I am the Association Manager of Town Properties of Coopers, Larchston. I'm here today because the board president was not able to attend, but I wanted to let the town know that the board has prepared a resolution for the association that will be voting on next week in a, in a meeting to, to, let me just read this to you, sorry, that will basically allow the association to find the cars that are being held in queue, which we spoke into our attorney representative about. You know, speaking for myself, I'm in this area quite a bit. If you're around here, you've been in that area as well, and traffic is a nightmare. So just on the traffic alone, on that intersection, I would really like the, the board to consider, you know, that, because not only during the holiday season, but it's grown, it seems to be like every occasion now, that this traffic issue is a problem in that area, and we hate to see it become worse than it already is.
Can I see a question? What, what area is included in it? Could you mention earlier Costco was somewhat separate? Is everyone in the association all the way back...
So just on the traffic alone, on that intersection, I would really like the Board to consider, you know, that, because not only during the holiday season, but it's grown, it seems to be like every occasion now, that this traffic issue is a problem in that area, and we hate to see it become worse than it already is.
Can I see a question? What area is included in it? Could you mention earlier Costco was somewhat separate? Is everyone in the Association all the way back to the end office they just built?
Yes, sir.
I forget who that is.
Yes, sir. That is LCS, Rent Manager.
So everything from Fields Road all the way down, that's all within the Association?
Correct.
There's Two Hotels, there's Three Alls buildings.
But Costco's part of that?
Costco.
They're not?
Yes, Costco's part of the Association.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
May I respond to some of the things that have been said?
First, let me see, is there anyone else here that wants to speak either in favor of or against? Please come forward, and you know the routine.
My name's Jen Wannhofer, I am the Property Manager, spokesperson for Site Centers, the only shopping center on Waterston Boulevard, the upcoming Ross all the way down to the Target, Michael's Parcel, but we also work for Target as well. Just to reiterate what I said at last month's meeting, I'm not in favor of it, it is going to block access on Waterston Boulevard, which is going to impede access to my tenants. Their busy time of the year is during the winter, which is also our very busy time of the year, holiday shopping, and that's just going to impede our traffic, impede our tenants getting their sales, and if, you know, as you drive around, if it's a mess, you're just not going to shop there, and I don't want that for our tenants. And in conjunction with what Jerry said and Mr. Atkins, I agree, this is not a self-serve lot. I don't agree that it's also a full-service lot, it is kind of like a hybrid, and I just don't see it being a great addition in that quarter.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Is that bank still there?
That bank is not there, and that actually raises the question, because as I'm also a board member on the Association, I never saw anything come through about US Bank being allowed to do their sign-through, so I'm assuming if they just did it on their own and didn't get any approval on it, is there record of them coming to the Township to do that?
It's outside of our purview.
Oh, because it's a different, it's a more kind, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to provide input, either for or against? Counsel, if you can keep it brief and point to what was said prior.
Yes, thank you very much. Something I just want to highlight that Mr. Atkins said twice, this has nothing to do with zoning, it's a private property case. Traffic is not a legitimate reason to deny approval here. It's not a legitimate zoning denial reason. Something I want to highlight here, this property is zoned for car wash use, you know what else it's zoned for? Drive-through commercial facilities, ID beverages. So we could put a Chick-fil-A in here, we could put a Dunkin' Donuts, we could put a Starbucks, the many problem children, I was queuing into a main road this morning for Dunkin' Donuts, as I often do, that could go here, something with a more intense use. Mr. Atkins indicated that he was unhappy with the stacking. Well, his issue is with the zoning resolution, what's permitted under the code. What we presented here today exceeds our minimum. We've improved it, and Mr. Snyder, who, this is his job, this is his bread and butter, indicated that he was pleased with the improvements that were made. This is not a private court of law, to the extent that there's issues with respect to private agreements. The decision with that should be made in a Hamilton County Court of Common Pleas case. This is here just for zoning. Mr. Atkins indicated that we had not reached out to the fire department. Well, that's the next step. To the extent that the fire department is unsatisfied or has any concerns, they would make recommendations, and to the extent that there requires a modification of our site plans, we'll get to see each other another time, it would be wonderful. Or is it enough? But the issues that have been raised have nothing to do with zoning. We are willing to make the accommodations that we indicated here, so that this is completely compliant, and that includes removal of the back as well as the change to the color of the sign. We've presented you with something that is compliant with the code, and we respectfully request that you approve our application here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Atkins, in all fairness, you're allowed to have another say if you'd like.
If you don't mind, just one last thought.
I will close the public.
Mr. Atkins, I heard him say it too, talking about zoning, he's passionate about it. There are real zoning issues here. There is no way we can look at the parking requirements for self-serve and full-serve and come up and say this is self-serve. Everybody here has been to these places, everybody here knows, and that is the reason why there are reservoir space requirements up for full serve. Now, maybe there should be a hybrid definition that is somewhere in between, but it's not the self-serve, it is certainly not the self-serve. Mr. Snyder himself said reference, there wasn't a definition. We asked him where the definition came from, where the determination came from, there's no answer. All you can do is look at the definition, or look at the parking requirements and what they reference, building, employees versus stalls that you go through, and spray your own car down. I think it is his only issue.
Thank you. Now, I gave you a chance, you declined.
You know, I don't litigate, I just don't litigate.
Sounds like you might be soon.
I'm a lit- that's it, and Waterston, all the rest as well. The issue for me is not zoning, it is for them, because they can get their way. I've worked with businesses, worked with them on cases, but I try to be a good neighbor. I try to do what's in the public good. I try, if I'm having a new business come in, I don't try to piss everybody off before I get there. And what they're doing is common sense. Can they get approved? Yeah, well, maybe. But what they're going to do is they're going to impact everybody else, and they don't care. They don't care, they're not here. They're representing a client that doesn't, that's somewhere else. Let that client come here and talk to us. Let us try to, we can't even work anything out, because they don't care. They're a big company, they're buying lots of car wash sites, damn everybody else around them, and who cares what happens to the business? I don't operate that way. I try to operate with integrity, with caring about the people I impact, and that's the way I've always done business. That's why I haven't been in this kind of arrest before. And what they're going is, they just say, we're going to get our way, and you. And this is going to be a problem. So I guess a common sense thing is, why won't they talk to anybody? Because we get our way with zoning. They're not going to get asylum, because the Association's going to, they're going to pass something to control queuing within the entire Association area. So we're going to take, we're going to be defensive, we're going to protect our interests, but the idea that you know that your property's going to queue, you're going to block the parking, you know, talk about, you can talk about Dunkin' Donuts, you can talk about Chick-fil-A, people are trying to solve their problems, they're creating problems, and that should be a signal to Sims Township, you know what, is this something that's for the public? Is this something that we're not going to have to deal with? So, it's not a zoning issue for me, it's a business issue. They could be zoning for anything they want, but if it was Starbucks, if it was Dunkin' Donuts or anybody else, and they, their plan to run their business is to block everybody else, think about that kind of business coming to this area. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. That'll close the public hearing portion with respect to the car wash. I will now talk amongst ourselves.
I have a question for Mr. Snyder.
Absolutely.
So, the zoning ordinance resolution states that if the code doesn't define it, that you go to the Hamilton County Building Code or a normal dictionary? So, like, what definitions did the county use to determine the full service versus the self-service or the?
Just the dictionary definition of self-service versus full-service. There is no hybrid parking requirement in the zoning code, there's only one for full service and one for self-service.
Okay.
And then, Brian, if I could ask you a question? Is it understood, if I read this correctly, is the requirement they have six stacking? What's the requirement? I know we've been through this enough, but...
I don't have the code in front of me. I believe it says four spaces per day.
This says one space per transaction plus five per lane equals six cars.
The parking requirements that are on the plan are not accurate.
No, this is number of stacking.
Yeah, the parking requirements that are on this site plan are not accurate.
Not the Township's requirements.
No, that's the, that's what.
Probably.
It's been the same since the very beginning, the first and middle, it just hasn't been updated.
So is 12 within the lane, or?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Counsel, at the end, are you available to discuss this? Mr. Forbes? I mean, I can assist with procedural questions, I can't, I can't make any determinations that are for the Board to make, but...
Here's my concern, and I think it's shared by most, if not all of us. The way this thing's going to end up is a big concern in terms of traffic in that area, in terms of development, traffic flow, site access, circulation, everything along those lines. But that's not within my purview. So, my heart goes out to them, but at the same time, I have to apply the zoning code within certain conditions and variances, and no matter what our decision is, one of these two, one of these sides is going to ultimately, I think, pursue litigation and handle it down to court. But again, that's not my concern. What I want to do is take what's in my purview, apply what we have, and provide a well-thought-out, rational decision, and if someone takes it to court, the court can say, okay, I can overturn it. But at the same time, I don't want a court saying, well, we think this is full service instead of self-service, vice versa. So I guess one question I have is, are you able to provide some insight in terms of the definition?
I can, I can provide.
It's beyond our purview and something we can't consider other than the general requirement of the general welfare of the area.
Correct, there's that, and then as Mr. Snyder said, there is the, you do have the ability to talk about continued access between adjoining parcels, but you, the private, the easement issue, that's a civil matter between private parties, that's not before this, this body has nothing to do with that.
So what's the difference between that and the actual access current? Like you said, that we have the purview over the access that's here. I know this is a difficult question.
No, no, that's, but Brian, I just saw his light come on, he probably wanted to answer that.
The site plan that was approved, the final development plan that's existing and current for this property, the plan that currently governs the site, shows a driveway connection between these two properties. You, as the zoning commission, maybe not you personally, but the zoning commission in the past has approved this final development plan with that site circulation, all the way around all of the buildings, back out to the driveways on both sides. If you felt like that was something that was in the interest of the health and welfare of Sims Township, you have the authority to require that to remain as circulation around the site, since this is all on private land and this is all part of the final development plan that's been approved, that's one of the main changes between the approved final development plan and this one, is that that access no longer goes around the building like it did before. So that's your consideration.
Is that considered variance, or is that just considered site plan approval?
It's part of the site plan approval, it's part of your authority as the zoning commission in approving final development plans.
But that's not part of your recommendation?
We didn't actually make a recommendation, these are, the staff report just includes all the facts of the case. We did point out the circulation as an issue in the original staff report, though.
Okay. Or four D's, so.
Yeah, I know.
I have a follow-up for Mr. Forbes. If Brian makes the determination that it's a self-serve car wash, is that something that we can make a different determination, or would they need to do an administrative appeal of his decision? I don't know, I don't know the township's version of administrative appeal. Like, is it his determination that, or, yeah?
No, so, staff makes a determination, and they prepare the material that you have before you, based on the interpretation, or the, based on what they've concluded as to whether it's self-serve or full-serve. You're the zoning commission, so ultimately, you have to make that decision. This is not a question of an administrative, this is not, I don't believe this would be an administrative appeal on an interpretation, as we have dealt with.
Yeah, I've dealt with that with other communities in terms of like assigning.
But that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be in front of this board, anyway.
Okay.
Can you help me understand what the words "health and welfare" mean? Pretty generic.
It is, it is, and it's, I mean, it's the basis of what gives all political subdivisions zoning authority. And no, I mean, I can't, I can't tell you what constitutes the health, safety, or welfare. That's, it's a broad term, and it's meant to be a broad term, because that's what encompasses your, that's what gives you the authority to do zoning in the first place.
So I would feel uncomfortable approving the revised access plan without clear approval from the PetSmart property owner and tenant that that's acceptable to them.
The site plan or the access?
The, them removing their existing access point, because right now, they have an approved access point to the, you know, Iron Chef, the subject property, and approving this site plan would take away their access point, it would negatively affect their property without, I feel like, them having a say in it. So, even though we can't, you know, the, their easement language and things, regardless of that, taking away somebody's access without their approval and consent doesn't feel like it's appropriate.
I agree.
And I also think the concerns with the stacking and potential of overflowing into the adjacent streets, I do believe that that's a concern of the public health, safety, and welfare, because I take my daughter to daycare up at the Compass School, and so I drive this two times a day, every day, and it's always a mess. And I can just imagine trying to get her there on time and having to wait for car wash people that get stuck in that line, and, so those are my thoughts.
Now, from a stacking standpoint, they meet our zoning code.
I understand that they meet the zoning code, but I think there is a clear understanding, I think, of demands for car washes that I don't think the existing zoning regulations meet, and I think a concern of stacking into the adjacent roadways would be a concern of safety and the health and welfare of the community.
So the current proposal blocks that access to pet land? I don't like that. Any other thoughts?
I'm just wondering, are we able to make a decision, though, based on what we think could happen in the future, or just based on what we're zoned to be able to approve?
Say what's zoned for approved?
Right, so like, we can't, we think that it could back up onto the street, but we...
Yeah, that's where this whole health, safety, and welfare thing is a very gray area, because there is no definition of it, so...
I think the cross-easement is the...
The cross-easement is definitely a concern, yeah. And, you know, based on the adjacent car washes that have almost double, if not triple, the amount of stacking spaces that they have, I mean, that's a concern, and my guess is that this is less than their typical amount of stacking spaces, but again, I don't know if Title has a kind of, you know, industry standard, I know a lot of car washes and major companies kind of, you know, they know what they want, and then they will adjust it if they need to, to get it fit, but I don't know if that's something that, you have that information? And I know it might depend on the size. Can she answer my question?
What was your specific question? I closed the hearing, but...
Okay, never mind.
Otherwise, we open up a whole can of worms.
But if we're concerned about kind of the what-ifs, I think, approving it, or not, the concerns with the access.
It's factual.
Is factual.
Access is a huge concern, for me individually, and I'm sure other members of the Commission.
If I remember correctly, in one of the three prior meetings, it was put in for fire reasons, for circulation of fire trucks, but...
I know it was discussed, does this ultimately go before the fire department for some approval of some sort?
As the attorney for the applicant stated, as part of the building permit review, it will be required to receive fire approval before the building permit can be issued. So it will be approved by the fire department before anything can be built.
In general... And generally speaking, what do they look at?
Compliance with the fire code.
I mean, do the, any of these issues we've discussed come before them in terms of overflow on the...
I can't say what's in the fire code. I just know that they look at their ability to fight fires. Good answer. I mean, they do have the authority to make changes, to require changes to a plan if they don't feel like that the fire code has been met with the proposed plan. That is a fact. If the site plan changes, it would have to, yes, as a final development plan modification because whatever you approve is the only thing that's allowed to be built.
So I guess one concern I have is, do we have a motion on what we have in front of us with respect to our concerns, or do we allow the association to try and work out a access agreement or cross-easement agreement?
I think it may be more straightforward to just...
Motion.
Motion, and then if they wanna come back at a future date, once that kind of agreement has been secured, then we could reconsider it.
All right.
Based on the current approved plan in place.
Based on the existing?
Yeah, it's that current plan approved today. They have the access there, is what you're saying.
Correct.
Yeah.
With that in mind, does someone wanna put forth a motion?
All right, do you want me to do that? Okay. I motion to, can I clarify? Do we motion in the affirmative or the negative?
I was just going to say, whatever you do, please make the motion in the affirmative.
Okay.
Typically, we make the motion for approval, and then you can vote however you see fit, but it makes voting a lot easier if you do that.
So a yes and a no is a no?
Yeah.
Okay, so I move to approve the proposed application with, I can add conditions, right? With the condition that the applicant provides consent from the adjacent property owner for that access point to be removed from their property. Can I do that? No?
I would say no, you're, you're delegating authority to a second party that doesn't have the authority to have that.
Well...
Just denying.
I think the best bet is just to put forth a motion with respect to the variance with the vacuum setback and the sign, and then just have an affirmative motion.
Okay, so if I move to approve contingent on the existing access remaining?
Yeah, and then I think...
Then you're still pushing it off to a third?
No, at that point, then, I would say that you probably don't know what you're actually approving because this plan is not set up to have that access connect...
Okay, so we're just flat?
Two ways.
Or we're flat? No conditions?
I mean, but you...
Other than the, I think you need a condition with respect to the setback. I mean, that's part of the plan, right?
If your intent is to vote no on the plan, then you would put forth a motion that just recommends approval or a motion to approve the plan as submitted, and then vote no on that motion.
Let's do that.
All right, so I submitted...
If you're intending to find something to approve, then you would want to condition however you see fit to allow you to approve it.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the subject, the application in front of us.
I will second that.
Mr. Utter?
No.
Ms. Fields?
No.
Mr. Kessler?
No.
Ms. Dyson?
The second item on tonight's agenda is Sims number 88-1, Sycamore Center at its... I'll just leave it at that. I started reading through this and it was, it was getting confusing.
Because it actually just says "pro" almost.
Staff, Brian?
Yes, Frank Snyder, General Plan, Planning, and Development. You should all have a copy of the staff report for this case. This is a final development plan modification. This is for case Simba 1-1, Sycamore Center. The request is for a, to allow a new outdoor seating, a dining area within an existing covered walkway. This property contains a restaurant in the location where the patio that was being proposed, the restaurants would like to fence in an area of an existing sidewalk that would allow them to have outdoor seating and serving outside. As stated, this is an existing sidewalk. The covered sidewalk that leads back between the two buildings that are, two of the three buildings that are on this property, that you can kinda see with the circle on it, and has some pictures of it in the staff report as well, really, they're just, they're talking about putting a fence between the brick columns, between coming out from the building to the brick columns and all the way along the brick columns to close, limit fence the entire portion in front of their restaurant area. Staff reviewed the parking requirements for this site and found that their parking analysis that they submitted complies with the code even with the additional seating area outside, so they didn't have parking to meet the code. They're required to have 145 with the additional area, they've got 170 on the site. The only concern that staff had is that they're closing off this sidewalk that allows access between these two buildings to the back parking area. You can see from one of the photos that was in the staff report, from the back parking area, it has the Corona flags, kind of crossed it in page five in the staff report. It has a retaining wall and a kind of a mulch landscape area to the outside of the closed or recovered walkway. Apparently, there are other locations in this center where they put walking stones or have a path through mulch areas, and staff will only recommend that the city commission consider adding, requiring one of those in this area to allow continued access between some of the employee parking spaces in the rear service areas in the back and in front of the building. To address the fact that that was the current area, that providing that access would be closed off.
Is that just landscaping right now?
It's, it just looks like it's just mulch.
Okay.
So, right, a stone path would work through this. It's not required, I don't believe it's a required accessible location based on the fact that there are no handicap squads in the rear of the building. So I believe a walking path would be acceptable in these situations.
As I look through this, that really was the only concern that I had. I mean, I think most people are in favor of outdoor dining, weather permitting, and my concern was, in order to work around that area now in terms of safety, I mean, if someone gets their heel caught in something, or... Do you have a recommendation as far as the best path around that? I mean, mulch, gravel?
Well, if it's covered with mulch, I would, I would suggest a paved walking path.
Concrete or...
They can make it concrete, they can use paver stones, they could do anything that would satisfy the definition of paved.
Okay.
No lethal place to go.
Thank you.
Does this have to go through building permit or anything? Is this...
I don't believe so. The fence, I don't think requires any building permit review. Because they're adding outdoor seating area, though, it may. I'm not familiar with the exact requirements of the building code for patios.
Okay. Thank you. Is someone here on behalf of the applicant? Sir, if you could walk up and state your name and your address for us, please?
I'm Mr. Robert Lurie. My address is 3710 Matthew Road, Amelia, Ohio, Fort Myersburg. I just, you know, timeshift, the Simba Township manager has been really good to us. I mean, our customers, we have very good old customers that come to the restaurant at least twice a week, most of them. I mean, which is why they're doing a section to stay outside because our restaurant is pretty small, it's only 25 hundred square feet. So whatever we need to do, if we need to put pavers there on that section, that's what we will do. But other than that, you know, I appreciate any of you guys' help, support, and the kind of timeshift. I appreciate that.
Very good. Any idea how many people will be seated outside?
Roughly, probably around 15 at the most around that area.
And you anticipate that being full on a Friday or Saturday evening when the weather's nice?
Oh, we're extremely packed on Fridays and Saturdays. Most people pack with leave because we just have one at the door.
As I indicated to Brian, that my only concern is, is the safety of people walking around in that, that, I guess, mulch area. So, I mean, my preference would be for some sort of paver, but we'll talk about it.
Yeah, absolutely. We just have a favorite point out to the section on top, but I grab pavers across the whole world.
Does anyone have any questions?
Can I ask a curiosity question? How long you been in business?
Six years.
Six years.
So this has been my wife and I's doing. I actually have a very good job, so my wife is the one that takes care of the restaurant. And let me tell you, when COVID hit, I had just filed for my liquor license through the timeshift, and three months later, COVID hit. So we just had about three years into the restaurant, and that really worried us a lot. But I can tell you, the support of the customers around the area was incredible.
Good, that's great. I have not been there yet.
Exactly.
Till tomorrow, I certainly will make a point of trying it out.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I have a quick question for you as well. What's the fence that, like, material that you're proposing to use to enclose it?
It's still the I-1.
Oh, okay. I just didn't see that. Thank you. I missed it somewhere in here.
It wasn't here.
Oh, it wasn't in here. Okay, good.
Based on the empty seats, I don't anticipate a yes, but I'm gonna ask, is anyone else here to comment on this particular proposal? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up to discussion among the board. Any comments?
I don't have any.
Other than what we stated?
All right, someone like, wanna put forth a motion in the affirmative?
I can do it. I motion to approve the proposed application for Sims 81-1 with the condition that a paved walking path be provided to connect the back parking, to connect the back parking. I think I can edit there.
There you go. I'll second.
Ms. Dyson?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Utter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, and the other restaurant is the I-1. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any old business? Any old business?
No.
Any new business?
No.
Nothing on the agenda for next?
Yes, we do. We have two cases on the agenda for next month. There's a, there's a zone change on the agenda for Snyder Road, and there is a modification for one of the office buildings on Governor's Way.
Where's, where's the zone change?
Snyder Road. There's only one spot on Snyder Road.
It's spelled differently.
Same, what you already reform.
Oh, the multifamily?
By five seasons?
Different plan, yes.
So I'm assuming the trustees did not approve it, then? That original plan? Okay.
We denied it.
The previous plan was denied.
We recommended denial.
Remember the apartment complex?
Yeah.
Multi-tiered Long 71. Assuming it's the same location, which I have no idea.
Yes, absolutely.
Any administrative matters? No. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn immediately.
I second.
You're good.
Ms. Dyson?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Utter?
Yes.
I find the I-1...